I pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an amended, um, council agenda. I've got a motion to accept the amended council agenda.
Make a motion to accept.
Second. All those in favor? A roll call. Oh, I thought, sorry, I messed up already. I'm swearing, I'm sorry, so we can hit the others. Oh, we have, well, our incoming council member Eric Bassett and also Kent Miller, so I'm gonna swear them in. And then we can vote, sorry. They want me to do individuals. Who wants to go first?
Okay, go ahead, Kent. Seority.
Say, I state your name.
I, Kent Miller.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Or affirm that. Or affirm that I shall.
That I shall.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
I shall not be influenced by.
I shall not be influenced by.
Any consideration except for.
Any consideration except for.
Of that merit and fitness.
Of that merit and fitness.
And then the appointment.
And then the appointment.
And discharge of employees.
And discharge of employees.
I shall not make or authorize.
I shall not make or authorize.
The expenditures of public money.
The expenditures of public money.
Except for the consideration.
Except for the consideration.
Efficient service of the village.
And efficient service of the village.
I shall faithfully and honestly.
I shall faithfully and honestly.
And partially discharge the duties.
And partially discharge the duties.
Of the members of the council of the Village of Hicksville.
Of the duties of members of the council of the Village of Hicksville.
Of Fines County, Ohio.
Fines County, Ohio.
For the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
For the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
To which I have been accepted. Early, I've been elected.
In which I have been elected.
So, we got. There you go. All, you can. I, state your name.
I, Eric Bassett.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
I shall not be influenced by.
I shall not be influenced by.
Or consideration except that.
Any consideration except that.
Of merit and fitness.
Of merit and fitness.
And the appointment or discharge of employees.
And the appointment or discharge of employees.
I shall not make or authorize.
I shall not make or authorize.
The expenditures of, of public money.
The expenditure of public money.
Except for the consideration.
Except for the consideration.
And efficient service of the village.
And the efficient service to the village.
I shall faithfully and honestly.
I shall faithfully and honestly.
And impartially discharge the duties of.
And impartially discharge the duties of.
Members of the council of the Village of Hicksville.
Member of council of the Village of Hicksville.
Of Fines County, Ohio.
Of Fines County, Ohio.
For the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
For the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected, so we got. So, we got.
Okay, thank you. Now where we at? Roll call.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
You're here.
Miller.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Egley.
Here.
Right now, a motion to suspend or to approve the amended council minutes.
I'll make that motion to, for the amended council agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Bassett.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
All right, thank you. At this time, we have some candidates that are interested in the open seats. Um, we asked them to come tonight and present or talk to us about why they were interested in that seat. Um, I'll just kind of go. I know Charlie's been working with the, the candidates and everything, but uh, we thought it'd be fair that everybody that's interested to come and speak. So, first off, Robert Bailey. Can we come up to the podium, please?
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate you guys letting me come in and talk to you a little bit, but yes, I want to be, uh, appointed to the, to the vacant seat. Um, currently, I am the office manager and opposing supervisor of found city title, uh, small titled company in Bryan, Ohio. Basically, just operating the day-to-day of the, of the office. Um, I've got some vast, vast experience in local government, uh, small government, uh, six or seven years as the zoning inspector for the Village of Sherwood. And then as a year and a half as the county treasurer. Basically, I don't have an agenda. I believe that, uh, government should do what's right and be fiscally responsible. And, um, I appreciate being appointed.
We have a question for you.
You live in town, don't you? Yeah.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
On next, we have John Hart.
I think most everybody knows me. Been around this town my whole life. Know most people. Been in business a ton here, Red Angel, for like the last almost eleven years now, so. And had, had heart's repair service since the early eighties and pretty decent with business, so pretty financially responsible. I was a maintenance coordinator at Steel Dynamics for almost twenty-five years over there, which I handled lots and lots of money. Uh, CEA projects, all kinds of stuff, so this is kind of right up my alley. I just think it's best to do what's best for the people of the town and the town itself. I may differ from what some people's opinions are, but you know, that's how you make good decisions, is debate it and figure out what's best. So, uh, what else to say? I think I sent you guys a resume for you to read. And, you know, it's up to you who you think's best.
Okay. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a, uh, Chris Warner.
Feel like I was the only one actually. May have came a little bit over prepared, but, uh. My name's Christopher Warner. Uh, before I begin, I wanted to thank you all for allowing me to come out tonight and just share in my experience with all of you. Uh, when applying for the vacant vouch, uh, village council seat, I had one thing in mind, and that was I wanted to make a difference in my community. Uh, I am no stranger to the community. Uh, since I've been twelve years old, I've been volunteering in the community, many different organizations. I've spent the last six years volunteering for Hicksville Community Television, uh, doing a variety of different duties while serving with them. Uh, I volunteered and helped with, uh, the Rotary Club before helping and volunteering with some of the, uh, fundraisers and other events they would do. And I currently serve on the Christmas Purse Board of Directors as a member-at-large and a volunteer coordinator. Uh, I feel I can bring the council a unique point of view when it comes to decision-making process. Being someone of the younger generation, I can, I can provide insight on how younger people moving into the village feel about changes being made and also help, help for their voices to be heard. I believe change is important, but I also believe that change should be done with guidance and support of those who are more experienced. I always accept help and guidance from those who have served longer than me. In any position, I always look to further and further my experience and knowledge in any given field. I wish the other candidates the best, best of luck, and once again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak, present myself, and if any of you have any questions for me, I will answer them.
How old are you?
Uh, I'm eighteen years old.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, now Jeff, you, you spoke here, what, uh, two weeks ago?
Yeah, the last conference.
Huh? Did you have anything else to add, or?
No, if you guys had any questions.
I know we've got a. I know at this point in time, I think, um, the committee, when they first set this all up, we're gonna, um, look at everything, right? Charlie, you had, had mentioned that.
Yeah, and that interviews.
Right.
Now, stop.
They'll, they'll conduct interviews with all four of you, and then they'll make a decision as a council, uh, within councils, so maybe an open meeting and, uh, present their findings and stuff, so. I want to thank everybody for coming and presenting and being a part of that. Thanks for, um, doing all that, so. Next on the agenda, um, we have nominations for council presidents. Open up the floor for nominations.
I nominate Charlie Martin for president again.
I'd like to nominate Ron Beverly.
You have the nominations? Are there any seconds to the current two nominations on the floor? No seconds. Do we need to hold? We're just asking, if we, if we can't have a second, we can't nominate, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna second Charlie. Charlie already has the training and it, he paid for it, so it would cost us more money. That's really the only reason why.
Yeah, we do the training, it's good for two years.
Yeah, yeah, and that was one of the things that was decided.
Try to save the, save the village money.
Right, unless you really don't want it, and then I'll.
Well, I just.
You don't think this twenty-two years of being here is enough to experience that?
No, it was a two-year thing that he paid for.
Built space for it, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, that's what it's based on.
We have a second for Charlie. Big motion for council president. Roll call.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Epstein.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Bassett.
Yes.
Uh, next on our agenda is the approval of bills in your packet. Oh, I'm sorry, council minutes.
Make a motion to approve this, as ready.
Is there a second?
I'm second, Ken.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Sure.
Bassett.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Epstein.
We have the bills, um, from our, since our last council minutes. Any questions or motions on those?
Make motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Miller.
Epstein.
Uh, boards and commissions, I don't think we've had anything happen over the holidays and everything, so. Must have missed anything today. Council committee reports.
Let's see if we got the, figure out what group we're in.
Yeah, so I'm gonna put that out there that way. I know some committees are wanting to perform here and get together here and that's the basis.
I mean, that's not yours, but.
I didn't get anything tonight.
So. I was gonna bring that up, but my, my mayor's minutes at the end about those, but, um, administrator's report, I don't think there's anything in the packet. Solicitors' report, uh, I want to introduce everybody, I'm sorry. This is Rachel Hammerstein, she's our new solicitor. Uh, I was gonna do that at the end too, but since you're up, I guess, Rachel. She's gracious enough to take on the position, and we're fortunate to have her, so, thank you, and.
Okay.
Your turn.
All right, bear with me here. All right, um, so we have the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash oh-one by caption only and ordinance resoning lot fifty-five, Edgerton's first edition in the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Why are we doing emergencies on things that are, are from June?
Because they weren't done in June.
And?
And they need to be done.
I would say matters a whole lot, just right, just in a way I had the amended agenda, so it's twenty-twenty-three. For all the. Or his numbers.
It's just on the agenda.
Yeah. Make a motion to suspend the rules.
I will second that.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Rip.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
Read the ordinance.
Second and final reading.
Second.
Second and final reading of, uh, ordinance twenty-two dash oh-one, um, by caption only and ordinance resoning lot fifty-five of Edgerton's first edition in the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion?
Move. One second.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
All right, then, the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash oh-two by caption only and ordinance resoning lot three-fourteen, um, lot three-seventeen, lot three-forty-four, and lot eighty of auditors plat in the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Or second.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
Second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-two dash oh-two by caption only and ordinance resoning lot three-fourteen, lot three-seventeen, lot three-forty-four, and lot eighty of auditors plat in the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Move.
Second. First, second. Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance twenty-two dash oh-three by caption only and ordinance resoning lots one-seventy-one and one-seventy-two of auditors plat in the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
Martin.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two dash oh-three by caption only and ordinance resoning lots one-seventy-one and one-seventy-two of auditors plat in the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Sure.
Bassett.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin. Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
And first reading of resolution twenty-two dash oh-one by caption only, a resolution expressing support for the enterprise zone agreement between the board of commissioners of the Fines County, Ohio, and NCO food equipment, and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend the rules. I'll second that.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
And, um, a second and final reading of the resolution twenty-two dash oh-one by caption only to, a resolution express, expressing support for the enterprise zone agreement between the board of commissioners of the Fines County, Ohio, and NCO food equipment, and declaring an emergency.
To move. One second.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Thank you, Rachel.
Uh, next on the agenda is department heads. Uh, chief, please, Benny.
I don't think we really have anything. I did check on costs. You had asked about the K and I costs. We're probably looking at less than two thousand, um, a year. Main, and mainly probably for bad bills. Uh, that would probably be the high end. Uh, I checked with the sheriff also on what they're, what they're spending, for three, three dogs, so. But, so, I think that's, uh. Those donations been coming along. I assume you had one that was deposited or whatever? Yeah, we've gotten two donations so far. Uh, I don't know if we've taken any this week, because I've been on vacation, or last week at all, so, I know we've gotten two donations. So. So far with it, so.
How's the training with, uh, Jennifer and then the other young lady, Elise?
Uh, Amanda will start June, or June, she's, January eleventh, she'll start. Uh, and so far with Jennifer, it's been going great, so.
Do you have any questions for the chief? Fire an EMS, please.
I really don't have anything, except for what's been going on. And. It's really taken a toll on us. I would love to have a executive session after this has all, personnel litigation. And, you have any questions? Where's the other? Bruce got, Bruce has answers for you. I don't, because it's at the EMS side. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I know we gotta, we gotta talk about some things, but I want to thank the department, the staff, um, several people that are working on the contracts and everything to try to resolve them. I know people are worried and upset. Um, I know you're trying to do your best along with the police department and the fire EMS to get out there and do what you can to help the people in the situation, but also, I know you're working with the Village of Sherwood, and I'm not sure if there's another community department helping, but I know they have stepped up.
Yes, they have.
Help coverage for our area, so, yes, it's something we definitely need to talk about, but I want to thank people for their patience, um, and understanding through this process, so.
Do you have anything? Oh, no.
Thank you, Bruce.
Park. Nothing. Uh, fiscal officer report.
We have the fund status through the end of December, um, also the utility intertechs and police department reports, and a letter from Hicksville.
Ready to have a question for Cheryl? I had a couple quick announcements, and then we can talk about executive session, but, um. I wonder, welcome Rachel again, if I'm taking on the role of our, our solicitor for our community. It's an important role, and we look forward to working with you, and then Kent Miller, getting that seat, and, um, again, having Eric come back and, and set up another title or this term through the elections, and then the candidates that have came and talked about the seat to open, see, we appreciate that, so. Um, again, I wanted to thank the EMS staff, like I said a few minutes ago, about, uh, doing your due diligence and coming forward with stuff, and, uh, we'll definitely keep talking about that here shortly. The, you got your committees. I left a blank spot for the new person sitting in, in my old seat. Um, if anybody has any questions on those, please let me know. And then the commissioners will not meet in Hicksville this Thursday. Their actual, their meeting in town, but they're having their session at the high school in the field house, uh, on January fourth. Sometimes they meet up here in the council room to discuss, uh, local matters, and then there are commissioners, things that they got going on for their agenda. But, um, I know we can post these dates probably. They come once a month to Hicksville to actually just do their, uh, work, so we can maybe post these on our website if anybody's interested, and meet with the commissioners for, um, that they know the time and the place and the date, so. That's all I have. And I want to thank people. This is a new seat for me. Uh, after all these years, I want to thank, uh, um, my wife, of course, she here? There she is. New role, new opportunities, new avenues, new direction to a degree, um, but everybody who's been supportive, um, the staff here, the, uh, it's a pleasure to sit here. I'm always want to make the, um, community stronger, work and make improvements. I know there will have issues. You can't, uh, you can't make improvements without issues and sometimes, um, not turmoil, but, uh, problems, and, but I'm here to work with anybody to better our solutions, better direction for the community, work with council, our staff, and, uh, everybody that, uh, works here, lives here. I love this community, so, thank you.
Picking up Christmas trees till, uh, twelve?
Oh, Christmas tree is due January twelfth, right? The curbside, so if you have a live Christmas tree, throw it out to the curb, and the village personnel will come out and pick it up, so. At this time, I will.
I got a question for you too.
What's up?
You go answer with the, uh.
So, when you're turning over the personnel for the candidates, can you have somebody help? Charlie and I are the, are the only two on there, because the new person will take that spot.
Yeah, because I wasn't sure how that was all going to with the candidates, but, um.
Another council member could maybe send in one, that one.
I do, I don't think it does hurt anything, so.
Would you guys want to send in on that?
We nominate, Ron's been here the longest. Ron, can you send in with, with the?
Candidates, to interview candidates.
I don't, that's up to you.
Go over, go over the resumes together.
I'm picking Ron.
Before we go into executive session, do you want to ask anybody from the public if they'd like to speak, because there's a lot of people here.
Right.
And I don't know how long executive sessions have been for last, so.
Does anybody have any comments right now, or?
Please make sure all your decorations are up, your trees, no lights and anything. That, the, I really appreciate that.
All right, curbside, undecorated.
Undecorated. You'd be surprised.
All right.
Make a motion to go into executive session for some personnel.
It's okay. I just want, it sounded like you had, you want me to wait and come back the next?
Let's do that. I know we were gonna talk about maybe some land, uh, acquisition and stuff like that, but if that would help.
Yeah, it sounds like you have other.
Unless we're on a timeline, or.
I think we're okay.
I think so. So, thank you for that. Yeah, go ahead, you can.
Hate to see you drive over here for nothing.
I can't hear.
Well, she, she heard a nimco.
I got, I got some great pictures of the new elected council members, I'm gonna post on social media, if you're okay with that.
We'll see, we'll tell them.
I'll just send it to you, you know, for your.
Who are being a public eye?
I know Erica from the Fines County CIC, she knows about everybody up here. We appreciate what you do. I apologize for missing that, but we are excited to move on with the new. We are excited to move on with some new avenues and direction and infrastructure improvements. We've got some expansion going on in town. We've got people looking in different places in town, so we've got things happening. We're excited for that, so. But thank you for helping Hicksville be a better place. Appreciate that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel and possible litigation.
Second. I'll second that.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.